Yeah.
He did?
Yeah. Yeah, he did.
Oh, that's right, Brother Mall wasn't it?
Yeah, I think that's what it was.
Yeah.
Was it in Greenborough?
I'm not sure.
The Ram, I mean locally?
I'm not sure.
No, I think it was downtown city.
Is that right?
All right, well, I guess I'll call Community Development and Zoning to order at five thirty. John, you want to start something first, I guess?
Uh, thank you, Deborah. Um, last fall, we prepared a punch list for State Route seventy-nine, minor items that still had to be completed because the project was done. And the contractor, because of the weather change, was not able to get to them. These items include things like drainage and finishing landscaping and stuff like that in a few areas. Probably within the next month, the contractor will be back to finish those. There shouldn't be any interference with traffic or anything like that as they do that. These are usually small items. Um, we have encountered a problem, though, on State Route seventy-nine. And I think the mayor mentioned to me that it might have been preliminarily addressed in the last street committee meeting. That's at the intersection of Oberlin and Andover. We're beginning to see a lot of accidents. And the reason for those accidents is that vehicles on Andover making a left turn to go north on seventy-nine are not yielding for incoming traffic from Oberlin. Um, what happened is that the reason this intersection doesn't have protected left turn arrows is because when they did all the traffic studies years ago, there wasn't enough volume of traffic crossing over or on Oberlin to have those. And when you put those in, you actually slowed traffic on seventy-nine. And one of the goals of the project was to move traffic along seventy-nine as quickly as possible. So they tried to not so much economize for money, but economize for time at that intersection. What's happening is, I can only guess it's the orientation of the intersection. It's not completely aligned, it verges off.
It's not a ninety-degree arrows.
Right.
Go ahead.
Right, and I think it confuses people. Also, because at other intersections, we do have the protected left turns, they made the assumption they can turn left if they've got the arrow. And we've been watching this now for about six months, and it has not improved. The accidents are occurring at a relatively regular interval. Um, one of the things you have to be careful of when you use federal money on a project is you just can't go changing it on a whim. Because the feds don't like that, and they could come back and say, hey, you're gonna have to pay us back the money for that project. And so we have to be careful. Now, we can't change things, and we can't make it better. And I've already contacted ODOT, and they have essentially said there are things we can do at the intersection on our own, without their permission, that will allow us to help correct this problem. On talking with the street department and with Joe Centerson, the existing signal system can be accommodated at no cost to basically control the traffic flow through the intersection in a manner that will greatly prevent the accidents. What that will entail is basically operating it as two intersections, the way we had it before we did the alignment. This is going to cause more delay of traffic on seventy-nine, um, but it will greatly reduce the accidents. Because if a vehicle is going to make a left turn to go north onto Andover, it will not have opposing traffic. Traffic crossing Andover, from Oberlin to Andover will not have to worry about that. So we do have a way of correcting it, essentially no cost. Um, the consequence is there will be more backup of traffic at that intersection. Um, but that's the worst possible thing that can happen. And there are other, we can go to more in-depth studies in the future and adjust the timing differently and play with it here and there to try to improve it as time goes by. But installing left turn or protected left turn arrows probably isn't going to help the situation any, at least in my conversations with ODOT. Our distance system would do just as well by readjusting the timing. So I've asked Joe Centerson to give us a street department some recommended timing adjustments. We should have that in a few days. And I think basically, if you don't mind, with no one's opposition, I'm gonna ask them to install that timing, we'll get it into effect and see how it works. And it should be a good way to control the accidents, hopefully eliminate them. Because the project has basically dramatically reduced the accidents, which is what we're looking for. We don't want to increase the accidents at one intersection, it's a trade-off. That's not what we're trying to do. So, I just wanted to give you an update on that.
Let me back up a little bit. Um, you had conversations then today with ODOT?
Yes.
On this, okay, because there was obviously some information there that you hadn't shared with me before, so let me...
That was just this morning.
Yeah, so, so, let me, let me back up here and ask some questions. Um, you said that there are changes that could be made that wouldn't, that we wouldn't need to go to ODOT for and ask.
Right.
Is that right?
Right.
Okay. Now, um, is having the function of that intersection go back to the way that it was prior to the project, is that one of the options that doesn't require an ask?
Yes, it is. As a matter of fact, that's one of the options that ODOT actually suggested to me on the phone today.
Okay.
As well.
All right. Now, in the interest of trying to safely move traffic along seventy-nine in as timely a manner as possible, it seems to me as though that option would require red lights longer on seventy-nine than if we were to utilizing the intersection cameras that we have, have dedicated left-hand turn arrows that would allow a left-hand turn movement when cars are wanting to do so. It would seem to me that having one intersection go green, having one street go green while the other one stays red, and then switching those to allow the other street to flow through. It would seem that the folks on seventy-nine would have a, a longer red light than if you were to allow the laps and then the...
At the same time.
Yeah, so, is having a dedicated left-hand turn arrow for both of those streets at that intersection, is that something that we would have to ask ODOT's permission to do?
No, we can put one in on our own.
Okay.
That's another question I asked.
Can we put them so that they're both at the same time, both left-handed?
We can, we can do that.
Yeah, I mean, because I guess the way that I would envision that intersection operating in as safe a manner as possible, while at the same time having the red light period for seventy-nine traffic be as short as possible, it would seem to me that we need to model the Andover-Oberlin intersection the way that the Hopewell Parkview intersection is. If there's somebody there waiting to make a left, they get a left green arrow. If there's nobody on the other side of the street waiting to make a left, you get the left-hand turns and, you know, the straight traffic. Um, although it would obviously perhaps require some equipment changes on our part in order to make that intersection function that way, to me, it would seem as though that would be the most efficient way to have the traffic flow of seventy-nine, you know, conducted through there. Do you think I'm right or wrong?
You're right. There's, there's no adage in business about diminishing returns, the law of diminishing returns. Uh, once you get to a certain point, putting more money into a project isn't necessarily going to make it that much better. We don't know where that point is at this intersection. So my recommendation is, is not go with the, the left turn arrows at this point. I don't want to rule it out for the future because it still may be a good idea. But let's just go with adjusting the timing on existing signals. Because they, they don't have to put ten seconds for Andover, ten seconds for Oberlin. They can shift the, the timing around. They can have shorter times on one, longer times on another.
Well, John, what would, what would be the difference if you're gonna make, if you're gonna make one turn left, why wouldn't you have both of them turned?
Well, what I'm saying is, you have, you have an intermediate step that you can go through that may work before you invest money. And let's not invest any money.
The existing signals at the intersection above you and the existing box over on the corner would allow us to make the change that John's talking about. The change that I'm talking about would require us to change the lights that you see as well as perhaps the box that controls the lights there at the, the intersection, is what John's saying.
We, we have the, we have the ability now to correct the problem completely. And as I said, the only consequence is a greater delay on seventy-nine. Now, we don't know what that delay is going to be. I've asked Joe Centerson to do the math on it. And probably tomorrow, they get with our street department and go over the time. So, my recommendation is we just go that way first, and then observe the impact on seventy-nine. If we feel that it is not satisfactory, then the next step is just to put in some protective left turn signals, as you're suggesting. But it, it may be enough, what we're doing, to solve the problem without having to spend any more money. And that's what I'd like to try first. It may not. And we may decide that yours is the best solution. But let's just go through the intermediate step first.
John, when you do that, of course, I'll have to take down the sign that says the yield on green left turn, take that down. But also, put up some signs on both sides, or the temporary message board or something that says, "Timing of this light has changed," whatever. Because they never did that from the get-go on the first change. I think that's half the problem, is people never realized that the timing actually changed there. You know, it just, it just seems like that was an education point there that, you know, people just didn't realize. They always came out of Andover and got the green light, they went. And there was never a sign or something that ever said that, you know, it was ever changed. So I think that helped hurt a little bit in the beginning.
Well, if we change it, it'll be very quickly, and we probably aren't going to have time to have a sign made to do it. And, but the good thing is this, is people are watching the lights, not the signs. No one's watching the signs that they've already put up.
Right.
Above yield.
Yeah.
So, uh, what you're saying, I think if we want to delay doing this and put the signage up, we could do it. But I, I don't feel comfortable. I don't want to see another accident there because we're delaying.
But what I'm saying is, now, if you change that with a green bulb, means you can go out of Andover, left turn, you have to wait. If there's cars coming out of Oberlin, the people now are gonna look and say, well, why aren't you going? Why aren't you going? They're, they'll be creeping out, waiting for that car to go because they think you have a green light, but they don't know they have a red light.
There won't be any cars coming out of Oberlin.
I, I know, but they don't know it. They will not know it.
They would expect to see it now.
They were expecting now, just, and everything, that's what I'm saying.
It's not everybody's messing up how you go through the intersection.
Right, but I'm just saying the same thing with the people in Oberlin. You know, the same way, if they're making a left to go south, anything, they come up there, the light turns green, and they start creeping out because there's cars over there, and they're going, why isn't that car going? Why isn't that car going? And they're, they're not going to know whether to go or not. Unless you put, I don't care if you just take a piece of cardboard and write, "Timing's changed," or, you know. Because unless you put a green bulb up or something, but then you need a different section.
Well, we can put signage up.
But I'm just saying, the people, unless you put ads in the paper, do something, let people know. Because otherwise, they're gonna go up there, and they're gonna wait, and you're gonna get two cars through an intersection instead of seven or eight while the timing changes. Because that first car's gonna wait. You know, because they've seen the accidents, they know it, and it's just like, why would you go? Why would you go on a green, you're making a left in front of someone else that could have a green arrow on the other side? You don't know.
Yeah.
You know, nobody knows it's a split-phase session, you know, you know.
By the time we get the signs up, I mean, we're not getting recovered signs up, obviously. But by the time we get the signs up, I mean, sure, we can do it. It, but, you know, to get them made up and stuff like that, you know.
But that little thing we got, the, you know, the flashes, your speed hit, I mean, play temporary message board. Put it up, or ti, you know, the slide will, timing will change on a certain date or something, or just, you know, any kind of notification.
You're talking about the mobile speed unit, the, the...
Yeah, yeah, just something that, you know, because otherwise, people aren't gonna know.
The guy who plays guitar down there.
You know, yeah.
Can you change, when you put a green, is it just green bulb?
Yes.
Well, can't you just, and maybe I don't understand traffic signals, but can't you just snap in? Are there two there, first of all?
Yes.
Is there one for both lanes? Can you snap in an arrow for the one?
Well, you have to, you have to make adjustments in your cabinet to control it.
No, 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 that's not what I mean.
You have to put the arrow light.
Snap the arrow cover into it because you're either gonna be able to go left or straight the minute your light turn green. When you go red, it's red, so...
Yeah, you could.
Maybe that will be another indicator that...
Well, no, no, you can't.
Turn left, turn on left.
Because you have to.
No, no, because you're gonna have, you're gonna, if there's two lights there for both lanes, if there's a light for both lanes, you're gonna have a green for the straight lane and an arrow for the left lane.
You're probably gonna have to add a head with, with, with a head. One of, with it. Uh, the state, I'm not an expert on traffic.
I know what you're talking about. Legally, you should have a light, I mean...
You have to have, the state has a uniform code of, of signage, basically, that says at that intersection, this is the signal setup you're going to have to have. It requires more than what you're saying. But what you're saying would probably, common sense-wise, work. But we have to go by the state federal codes, regardless of how the traffic signals are set up. So we would have to do that.
You, you gotta, you gotta listen to jokes, what these, these guys tell you to do. And actually, I think it was jokes that was involved twenty years ago when we bought a system that is, uh, in theory, controls more globally in our city, the traffic lights, than in a biopic way, one intersection. Sounds like we're talking about messing with one intersection when I believe that system, that I think you were perhaps involved in.
That was the very first project they did.
Anyway, the, I, I was, I don't know about the rest, I was so dismayed last, last, uh, street committee meeting, that Dave basically described it for three years. That system has not been functioning, and we've gone through Christmas seasons with people, you know, one of, one of the, there's lots of reasons to come to Heath, and there's some reasons to not come to Heath. And one of the reasons to not come to Heath is sometimes the traffic. And, uh, so, I, we recognize that we have some challenges with traffic. But, but we gotta get to that point that John's talking about, of the law of diminishing returns, and get to that apex, get it to be the best that it can be. And, you know, talking about, fiddling about the adjustments on one intersection when you got this system, you know, the, the, the whole pitch at the time was, our system will never be right as long as we have these three, at that time, offset intersections. Now, we're down to zero offset intersections, and I, you know, we're still having, we're, we're, well, yeah, you, and, and, and you, you go by at Christmas time, and, uh, these, these streets got no cars sitting there, and you've got traffic stopped with green lights. And all I'm saying is, our system is not functioning very well. It's not, is it? And, and, you know, I don't know how you get to that spot, but, but that's, that, for me, is frustrating. Because I want people to come to Heath, and I think it should be important to everybody here. But right now, we've got the best traffic flow on seventy-nine we've had in a long time. And that's pretty impossible to deny. I'm not saying it's perfect, it isn't. And, and Keith is right, the system that we put in long ago, um, we never really utilized with full effect. And, and with the seventy-nine project out, we've made it easier for these systems to work because of the alignment and interceptions, the addition of all those turn lanes and stuff. And we can optimize it, but there's a limit to how much you can optimize it. And there's a limit to how much you can do to really control the traffic, and we're pretty much there. Um, we can, we can tweak it here, tweak it there. But the traffic flow we have on seventy-nine now isn't really going to get much better. And, and, and one of the things we need to defend is, is making changes when we don't have to. And, and so we have to be careful. Unless some new super system comes up in the future, or people stop driving cars.
Now, I'm going to go back to this, I, I'm, like, the question I have for you too is, I want to make sure you understood, I wasn't asking for that little left, snap in left arrow so people go left at the same time from either direction. I'm talking about with the way you had it set up. Green this way, the sides all red, then they get a red and they get a green. And Tim's concern was, people just don't know. You literally can't snap, leaving it your way. Red here, green here, red here, green there, you know, can, you still can't put that left snap-in piece in for the left-hand turn lane, so that gives them the idea, okay, it's a green arrow, that means I can go. You see what I'm saying? I wasn't...
Yeah.
As you see a green arrow, that gives you more of an assurance that you can safely make a left-hand turn.
So Tim, like Tim said, then I said, they're going, why aren't you coming? Come on, let's go, I want to go. I'm not talking about left at the same time, I'm just talking about painting that picture up there without a sign saying, hey, I can go. I didn't know if that was an option.
I would say so at this point.
Okay.
That's a shame, because that's a common sense solution.
Yeah.
Well, common sense is a really...
I know. I'm sorry.
I, I guess I've been doing this for so long that, um, I've lost, I've lost sight of what common sense actually is. I've been sort of absorbed into the system, and, and I've given up. But what you're saying has a great value.
You can't do that either.
Yeah.
It's not allowed.
Beat it down.
But, but anyways, as far as the sign goes, Tim, we can certainly do that. I don't want to delay doing this until we get the sign because we're averaging two accidents a month, but it's a good idea.
I'm just saying, then, the minute you switch that, the, the, I mean, everyone has got to wait, so... You know, I, I thought that after, I, 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 I knew that there would be an adjustment period with it being a true intersection. And, and the traffic signal operating the way a true intersection does. I, I knew that there would be an adjustment period. Problem is, is that not enough people have adjusted to the fact that if you're making a left-hand turn, you have to yield to traffic that's going straight. Now, what makes Tim's point correct is, certainly, there is a percentage of the driving public through that intersection who have made that adjustment. And if you do something to change that without telling them that it's being changed, then they're not gonna be handling that intersection properly, so...
That five percent doesn't write to me. And you know what? I am not an act five percent. I can sit here right now and say that I turn left in front of somebody. So, but, but anyway, we, we do understand the problem, we have a fix for it. The fix is gonna have to be adjusted and tweaked as time goes by, but it will work. And if it isn't as good as we want it to, then we can fall back on what the mayor and Doug are saying, and invest a little more money in it later on, and put in those, um, protected left turns.
Any other questions, comments on that? Okay, John.
Um, item number two, uh, traffic counts are a very important piece of information that we provide to a lot of people interested in this community. Um, we don't have a mechanism to do traffic counts ourselves anywhere in the city. So, I mean, we could hire somebody to do it, or we can ask the Licking County Area Transportation Study, LCAD, to do it for us, for nothing. And, uh, they have agreed to do that.
Free?
Yeah, free. And, uh, most of the traffic counts, it's... Because I just have a sweet way of talking to people. So what we'll be doing in the next three to four months, or ALCADs, actually, is doing a lot of traffic counts, uh, a lot on Thirty Street, seventy-nine, and a few outline areas as well, to bring our traffic count system up to date. And then what we do is we put this on our website, we have an interactive GIS system in the zoning department that we put it on, so any developers, potential developers, anyone who's interested can get traffic counts. So this is a nice way to freely update it for us. And it's a very important tool for economic development. So we're gonna be starting that.
Any questions on that?
When's the last time a traffic count's been done?
It, uh, most of them have been done for five or six years. The bulk of them on seventy-nine were done when we actually started the seventy-nine safety improvement study back in two thousand and five, two thousand and six. Hopefully, they should do an improvement. Item number three, the land use and thoroughfare plan is a master comprehensive plan, uh, showing how we expect the city to grow and how we expect outlined areas that aren't within the city to grow in the next fifteen to twenty years. Uh, it's an important tool for planning purposes because it gives us an idea of where roads should go in the future, where utilities should be located in the future. Also, it gives us, for lack of a better word, legal control of growth in the city. If we have a developer that comes in and wants to change the zoning in an area that we don't want to change the zoning on, and would refuse to do it, and that developer sues us and takes us to court, if our land use and thoroughfare plan shows the zoning coincides, our zoning and what we want to do coincides with the master plan and his doesn't, that's a powerful legal tool to protect us from bad spot zoning by developers who try to use the legal system against us. The Planning Commission has been working on this for probably four months. And I would think probably in March, when we have our March Planning Commission meeting, we'll finalize the plan, and we should be able to bring it to the council, uh, uh, probably in April. So, and the last time we did the land use and thoroughfare plan was in two thousand and eight, so it's going on five years old now.
Any more questions on that?
Zoning fees. Most of our zoning fees have not been updated in between ten, fifteen years. And if you go through the codified ordinance, and it has a little parentheses at the end of some of the paragraphs that say when the ordinance was updated, it's scary to see when our fees were updated. Um, they do not reflect the cost of a lot of things we do nowadays. Uh, we have basically conducted a study where we used, um, we, we cost-analyzed the amount of time and money it takes to issue a permit. We translated that into dollars, and we compared that to our current fees. And we also went to a few outlined communities and compared our costs, the outlined communities' charges. And, um, we want to review them with the mayor before we present them to council. Council, we haven't done that yet. But we are going to, probably in April, propose, uh, an update, uh, for several zoning fees. Now, what we don't want to do is we don't, uh, our goal isn't to make a ton of money on issuing permits. But we do want the permits fee to accurately and fairly represent the cost to the city. For instance, if you go to the Planning Commission, that's a very costly affair. We charge thirty-five dollars for someone to go before, or the Board of Zoning and Building Appeals, stands for variance. But if you look at the mailings that we have to do, within three hundred feet of a property, if you look at the cost of overtime, uh, not for me, but for Eddie or for Lynn Hunt, who's the secretary, um, and these type of things, it adds up to more than thirty-five dollars an hour. So we just want to capture some of that cost of that. But we don't want to generate a fee that makes it impossible to go before the Board of Zoning and Building Appeals. So somewhere, we have to compromise. So that's what we're doing now, is we're analyzing our fee structure and trying to update the fees, but still make them manageable for the public to use.
It's the same fee when I was on site.
Yeah.
Be interesting to see how you came up with the fee structure, because time is priceless, John.
I know, it was difficult, it was difficult, but five thousand dollars for BZBA just isn't a lot. Actually, what...
Before he was good.
Well, I take so much time for stuff like these meetings. But actually, I, I hate to say this because I don't want to feel useless, but we used Eddie's, Eddie's time, uh, for this and not mine, just to keep the costs lower and all that other stuff.
Still thirty, it's still thirty-five bucks.
It's still thirty-five bucks. And the base fee for a zoning application is still fifteen dollars, which it was when I came here. So, I'm not saying it should be a hundred dollars, but it needs to be a little higher than that. So...
For example?
Yeah, for example.
Among the area developers and economic development people, we're fortunate in Heath to have a reputation of having a, um, extremely competitive, uh, fee structure, and an extremely competent staff, um, to work with. Those are two things that we'll try to maintain.
And the fee structure isn't going to be uncompetitive. It'll still probably be lower, none of the outlined communities, but better than what we have. So...
Any questions on that, comments? Okay, John.
Finally, um, the mayor's idea, which I think is outstanding, to populate our banner poles with banners on seventy-nine is moving along. Um, it's slowly developing, it's, uh, but it's, it's moving. Uh, we have twelve banners that we can put on these posts. And, um, a month ago, we sent out letters to a lot of lawful businesses along the area of seventy-nine where the construction was because we wanted to give them a first shot. And we had so far, uh, two businesses reply. One... One for a willingness to sponsor some banners in the spring and one for a willingness to sponsor some banners in the fall. Well, if we want to populate the banner poles with banners in the spring, we need to get moving on that now. We really can't wait any longer to get requests in. So what the mayor has allowed Bob Geller and I to do is to use our department's funding to make up the difference that this one company, you know, the difference between what the one company is paying and what we have to pay for the remainder of the banners. And what's happening, the good news is this, we've been working with Dr. Seines, with Becky Indaway, and they came up with an outstanding idea. And that is, when we make the banners, the sponsor's identity is going to be removable. So next spring, we can, if we have different sponsors, we don't have to pay so much money to make the same banners. We just pay a much smaller amount of money to put a new sponsor's logo or name on the banners. So, the first... The first groups of banners that we buy will be the most expensive, and as time goes by, it'll be a lot less expensive because we're not actually replacing the banner, we're just replacing the sponsor's name and logo. What I am asking tonight is the total cost of the banners is approximately twelve hundred dollars, and we received four hundred and eighty dollars from X-Files Park National Bank. And now Bob and I, in order to have a purchase order written, have to use our funding for the total amount, the twelve hundred dollars. So what we're asking for is the four hundred and eighty dollars that has already been given to us by Park, which has been put into the general fund, kind of be split up and half returned to Bob, half returned to me to help us compensate for our payment for the banners. So I just have a legislative request here asking that the four hundred and eighty dollars split into the two two-hundred-and-forty-dollar amounts be put back into our budgets. If that makes sense, everyone. And just because Eddie's putting pressure on me and trying to go through this as quickly as possible. And remember, you guys are the ones that slowed it down while others questioned it, not me. So, but anyway, never that's it.
Anybody else have anything else for community development zoning? There are nothing. We'll adjourn at six oh two. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, John. Now, I tell you guys too, on that land use and thoroughfare plan, John and Eddie have done a really good job in working with us on the Planning Commission to kind of explain the purpose and help to provide some historical context of why things were established on the plan as, you know, as they were up to this point, so that we can understand, you know, before we just go making changes here, there, and everywhere, understand kind of why they... Why it's gotten to the point that it is.
Can I, real quick, probably, I know the meeting ended with Deb, but, you know, we lost Clark Motors. And then one of my customers called today, and they moved to Lancaster. And I said, "Wenkin, you were there this weekend. I thought that Heath Motorsports is..." Oh, okay. That's what I get for not being there. You can tell me about it later.
He's reading the paper tomorrow.
Yeah, really.
You know, Kent had left me a voicemail latter part of last week asking if I had heard anything about, you know, a couple businesses potentially coming in and one that leaving or whatever, and I called him back and left a voicemail. I said, "Kent, first of all, new businesses coming in, oftentimes I don't hear anything until the deal's well along the way." And no offense, Kent, I'm not going to be the first one to tell you. I let the businesses be the first one to tell you. And the business is going out, I usually, I usually don't know about it until they're gone. So, I apologize for not being much of help to you, and I just, you know, it doesn't get to me, you know?
It's disappointing. That's two of a short span. It's not good.
Well, and of a similar business segment too, if that says anything, you know? Look at, over the past six, eight months or whatever, look at how Ford and GM and how they've, you know, Chrysler, how they've reported such growth in new car sales. Well, what does that mean, you know? So... I grew up with, wow, I didn't grow up with Paul Deig. I went to high school with Paul Deig from, it was at Heath Motorsports and grew up, went to high school with him in Lancaster.
Anything else? We've been, I should get them. All right, I think we're ready for finance committee now. Does everybody have an agenda and a Moody's attachment, correct? This?
Right there.
Okay, first item, authorize the disposal of a nineteen ninety-eight Ford F-150 pickup truck. Water distribution departments came out of service. Mr. Martin, any comments?
Yep, we'll want to get rid of it after we get it due.
Like, add it to this waiving the bidding procedure, please. Oh, it does. Good.
On the disposal of the ninety-eight?
Yeah, I see that. That's that.
Oh.
Yeah, I don't know if they're going to want me to do it on eBay or how it's going to be done. Not a lot of success that way, so... I think that's the way to do it. Committee? Next item, authorize the disposal of three Allen Bradley Pumps. It's also from the service, correct?
Yes.
Comments, Mr. Martin?
Just plug in everything's up. But new ones in, you saw there?
Sure, and we're disposing of plenty of things of its own.
Now, there was a comment during the meeting that there's another place for this type that John was supposed to talk to you about.
Brian mentioned it, didn't he?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's...
Gov deals.
Well, it's bid on equipment, and there's different sites that are like that, but they specialize in process equipment. If you want to look at it, I haven't had a chance to.
Bid on Equipment.
Yeah, bidonequipment.com is what Brian...
Something you can always look at. I don't know if it'll be something...
I'll be glad to look at it.
Sure.
Do you know, Brian, do people in the market for that kind of equipment, do they maybe tend to go to that website maybe before just looking at eBay? It's more like a general one or...
I think that most of the time, they'll probably look at both.
Kent, do you need anything from me?
I'm going to talk to Johnny, but if you can call the paper after...
Yeah. I, uh... I will. I will. I was trying to look here real quick. I'll give you a ring.
Okay, thanks.
Yep.
You know, it's hard for me to tell you what other people do. I know that when I look for, because I buy quite a bit of used equipment for my business.
Yeah.
Anytime I look for process equipment, I'll look at both, bid on equipment and eBay. And you will find some of the same exact equipment that's on bid equipment on eBay. I mean, the exact same thing by the same person for sale.
Really?
Yes, because they're getting both places, because some people, you know, they're not going to mess with eBay because eBay doesn't have near the process equipment that this site would have. But, so they're trying to grab both markets just in case somebody doesn't look at one, they're looking at the other.
Yeah.
And I've sold stuff on both sites. And I've listed things on both sites.
Yeah.
And it just depends. It's at the same time. It's just a matter of if you've got the right person looking for it. I've had stuff sell within an hour, and I've had stuff to actually sit there and fall off the list. Just another avenue of people to look at, and I know they like that kind of stuff.
All right, item three, appropriate twenty-seven thousand nine sixty-three thirty-six for a series four pickup truck, water distribution, and we can get a bidding on this as well. It's like Matthews Ford is aligned with the state debt, right? I saw an agenda for it, mate. I don't see where we need to waive it. Need to waive any readings on this?
I don't believe that was, I don't believe that was discussed.
Mr. Martin, any other comments?
Replace the one.
Disposals applied. Fourth item, authorize the director mayor to advertise for bids for the Heath Water Plant Improvement Project. Tomorrow.
That is a waiver.
Yes.
Waive the second reading. Is that on tonight's?
Did John just come in?
Yes, he did. I think that one...
Deb, questions?
It's on seventeen on the water plant?
Seventeen, waive your second reading.
You want us to waive that?
Are there a second reading on?
Yes.
And the... Everything else stays.
Fifth item, authorize the director mayor to advertise for bids for the wastewater plant lift station removal at Sowell Drive and Fox Run Lift Stations.
Is that a waiver or not?
As I see, as I see the yellow highlight, waive the second reading on this one. More thumbs up? Comments on that one? Sixth item, appropriate forty, four hundred and eighty dollars for banner reimbursement that we just discussed. And, Mr. Rob's committee. Deb, sign. Any comments on that? Men's zoning fees and codified ordinance.
I thought John's going to hold off on that till after...
Scratch number seven.
Or not in two weeks, it'll be next one.
Other items. Mr. Rob, take it from here?
We've got two two borrowing events going on. The water tower note, we are renewing for the third and final time, maybe. The, and secondly, we're about to sell bonds for the water plant for that one-point-five-million-dollar project that's on schedule. That goes, the advertising for bid was item five on my agenda. That's to be waived tonight. The we kind of decided that you may recall when we did that water rate study, that the model for that included this project. But it included the project in an assumption of us borrowing money for twenty years on that. The interest rates are so darn good, and we would save a significant amount of money. And I don't believe it will seriously impact the model if we go to ten years. The interest rate is less for ten years. I forget exactly what the difference is. But it's between two and two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars you'd save in interest by going ten years instead of twenty. You're looking at maybe an interest rate of about one-point-three-five compared to...
Five percent is the model.
Yeah, so it's more per year, but over the project life, I would like to see the debt in the future to be as little as we can make. So we haven't completely decided on that. It does take our water fund balances down to a low of about six-hundred-thousand dollars. That's significantly lower than the comfort zone. But that'll be, that'll bottom in fourteen, and it'll start to rise. And I think on the long term that that's the best thing to do. The mayor mentioned that we could maybe renew next year half that note if we are uncomfortable about that balance. And instead of renewing one-point-one million, we renew about half of that. And just to keep that cushion, but if we renew the note, it's not much different than going to borrow the money if you needed to. So I don't know, I don't know where we'll head with that, so I just throw that out because the mayor, I think, thinking out loud, mentioned that. The all-inclusive cost for the water tower, that's the cost of bond council, cost of underwriting, bank interest rate, and so forth for this note for 2013. As I had mentioned, about one and a half percent I was off, it was actually point-eight-nine-five percent annual percentage rate with all those costs included. Last year, the rate was point-nine-four-two, and the initial year was one and a half percent. So you may recall that when we went down this pathway of rolling this note every year, I was a little uncomfortable, but my crystal ball indicated to me that this would be a good way to do it rather than borrow money on an installment. And it's certainly turned out to have been good. And of course, the intention is to pay that note off in 2014, about this time next year. Now, the city's bond rating was reaffirmed relevant to this one-point-five-million-dollar bond issued for the water plant. It was reaffirmed at AA two. The best rating that you can have is AAA. And then the next best is AA one. And AA two is the third best rating that you can have. For comparative purposes, the county also has an AA two rating, and New York's is just at AA three, just still very good.
How low is that number? I mean, kind of like A through an F here, I mean, how far down is it? Are we at the top ten percent or are we in the middle? How low does that rating go? A, one, the data's one, two, and so forth, three?
After it gets to AA three, then it goes BBV, BB one, BB two, BB three. And I don't think governments are rated below BB three. I don't, just kidding, I don't think so. And there's obviously some governments that have fallen down on some debt. But as you, you're welcome to put yourself to sleep and read this, this bond rating. I'll call your attention to a couple things. On page three, you'll see what could change the rating down about the third line. There's two things that they indicate. And one is the deterioration of the city's tax base or weakening of the demographic profile. They consider one of the weaknesses that we have is we are so heavily reliant on income tax. And income tax is subject to employers picking up, you know, failing or leaving. And it's subject to... And it's subject to recession. So, but I, I, I guess I'll, I'll point out that the other thing that could change the rating down. This is the first time that this has been mentioned in these reports. Is a sustained trend of general fund balance decline. And that's, that's, that's my warning to you. It's, it's, and it's, 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 it's telling to me what the, the city is healthy. And our balances are great compared to some places, but we want it exactly that way. So. That's, that's, that is exactly my idea of the two million dollars and. So as you look to future budgets, be cognizant of, of that. And that's all I have this week.
Can I go back to the first two legislative requests? I heard you say something about waiving competitive bidding or doing something like that, Keith. But are the ordinance that are already in our packet, doesn't reflect that? Should that be on in the title thing or something like that? So we can actually change it before they're read and it would be in there, I mean. Fifteen and sixteen doesn't say anything about competitive bidding or anything like that. It just says authoring the mayor to allow for the sale. Do we need?
Yeah, I, so I, I would like you to amend that to reflect waiving the bidding.
Well, if I get, if I get Linda to change it before we read it, it can, it can be that way, you know, if she reads it, that way that we don't have to amend it.
Yeah, that would be good.
At the end of each one, just say waive competitive bidding at the end of each one of them.
On fifteen, is it?
Fifteen, sixteen. Is that good enough?
They're both in the legislative request last time.
Yeah, but it, it didn't say on the ordinance itself.
Lynn must have missed it. Good catch, Tim, thank you. Yeah, I want a lot of latitude when I sell this stuff. I, I like that, I like that stuff. All the latitude in the world.
Wait the second reading.
See you later.
And you just always said, I have a comfort level of two million, really, this preserve preservation of our bond rating is hard to win.
Absolutely. I share, there, there is a, there is a lengthy, hour long bond rating interview that's conducted kind of in conference form. Mayor's involved, Linda Richards is involved, I'm involved. And a young guy that works for Moody's has a whole series of questions. He's interested in economic development, the mayor handles that part of the, the interview. He's interested in what's going on, who's leaving, who's coming, he's looking for positives and negatives. He's, he's, he's looking to take us from the last bond rating that we had through this one. And he, he's, Moody's is trusted by people that invest money. And they will look, read a Moody's report and decide whether to invest money in the city of Heath in a bond, buy a bond from us. And the better our finances are, the better rate we will get. So it, it is real important to maintain, be great to improve.
Have you been higher?
Never been higher since I've been here. This has been continued.
Been lower?
I don't re, I don't recall us being lower either. It's not something that jumps around a lot. I, it, that bond rating has remained the same as long as I've been here.
It's good that you elaborated and kind of got behind your comfort of the two million dollar number.
And I, I shared, shared that with, with Moody's as well. You know, he, he kind of quizzed me, hey, what about, you know, you're, you're seeing this decline, this decline, and what about that? And that's, that was perhaps the toughest question in the, the interview. And, you know, I, I was, I, I said that our council has great clarity and understanding. That the, the continued demise of the general fund cannot continue forever. And that our mayor is well aware of that as well. And, you know, talked about different hopes and plans of how to attack this. But everybody's aware that, that things cannot continue the way they are, so.
To be able to borrow money at less than one percent. I imagine there's a whole lot of municipalities around this country or the state that are seeing decline.
The, the, the biggest belly laugh, biggest belly laugh I've got, by the way, David Tigitt, our consultant with Fifth Third that's leading us through it. Was involved with the bond rating interview as well. And the biggest belly laugh I got out of him was whining at the end of the interview after it was, you know, kind of, would be. We didn't know for sure where we were going. I guess it was, I guess it was after he called and said that we, we reaffirmed the, the bond rating. And I whined to him, I said, how come our bond rating isn't better than the United States government's? And, and he did, he did what John did, he belly laughed, he says, I don't know, I can't answer that. And this guy's a, a real problem, so. Because they're borrowing money to make current expenses, at least we're not doing that, yeah. Yes, Tim?
All right, one other thing, since we're in finance, the, the very first, or not very first one, but the very first new ordinance, uh, ordinance thirteen, the hundred seventy seven thousand. From budget, budget stabilization of the general fund. Do you want to talk about that to make it the two, I mean, could we talk before about, do we really need to do, not do it or like that move, maybe you got some concern and stuff that, I just, do you want to talk about that?
I, I think that, you know, the, the, the concept behind wanting to, you know, on paper. Start the year in the general fund with the general fund balance being two million, that's, that's a solid concept. I mean, Keith has talked about this for two or three years now and, and I, I agree with the idea behind it. It helps us to benchmark how we're doing. For instance, last year, we had to, in order to begin two thousand twelve with a two million dollar general fund balance. I want to say we had to transfer about two hundred and twenty five thousand dollars from the budget stabilization fund into the general fund. And that was having started two thousand eleven with a general fund balance of about two million fifty thousand. So in reality, in two thousand twelve, our total general fund expenditures were about two hundred and seventy five thousand dollars more. No, no, in two thousand eleven, our total general fund expenditures were about two hundred and seventy five thousand dollars more than what our general fund income was. So last year, since we're looking to transfer the one seventy seven, you can see we did about a hundred thousand dollars better overall in two thousand twelve than what we did in two thousand thirteen. Now, keep in mind, the budget stabilization fund is the fund from which. We would look to go to, to reimburse any new businesses coming to Heath or existing businesses in Heath that significantly expand. Utilizing that income tax incentive program that we have in place. Which is really a gem for the city. In fact, Grow Lake County, the Economic Development C I C, their website just recently went live. Now, we're not really publicizing that it's live because we're trying to break it in essence, you know, but, but it's out there. If you go to, if you go to their, their website is live and, and you will see properties listed. The Port Authority's property availability is listed out there. And one of the things under incentives is it says that we have this income tax incentive program. Obviously, not everybody in Lake County, when they have properties up there, i- i- is going to be able to have that as well. So we, we need to be cautious as to how much we dwindle that fund down. Because that's where our camera revenue money went into. And as we had discussed when we, you know, put this incentive program in place, you have to utilize non-tax revenue. Uh, for the program, non-income tax revenue, yes, for, for the, the program. So you're talking fees and fines and this kind of thing, which obviously camera money was, was, was of that sort. If we dwindle our budget stabilization fund down to zero. And we can no longer have that incentive program because we can no longer show on paper where that, you know, that that money is, is non-tax revenue. So I, this transfer here would take that fund but down to slightly more than six hundred thousand dollars. I don't want to, I guess what I'm saying is I don't want us to deplete that fund so much that that tag, that that incentive program now goes away. Unless we're willing to have it go away. Uh, which I personally think it's to our benefit that we have it. So I guess Keith, if, if, if in the future, if there's a shortfall, if there are ways that we could. Operate, you know, as far as Linda and I know how fill in the different pots of money or whatever, I don't know if there's ways that you can do that without starting the year at, at two million dollars. But, you know, yeah, I, I, I'd hate to see that program go away. I, I'd hate to see the budget stabilization fund dwindle to a point that basically we can't offer that, you know, incentive. And one of the ways that we do that obviously is not spend more money in the general fund than we bring in to the general fund, which is clearly. An avenue that we're gonna, you know, have to take a serious look at. But I, I just think that it would be a benefit to, to us in the future to make sure that we have all options on the table. To make sure that we are securing a, a budget stabilization fund balance that allows us to maintain a usable program, you know what I mean? But I said, good side is, we did do better in two thousand twelve than we did in two thousand eleven. The issue's gonna become though, we had revenue streams in two thousand twelve that we no longer have going forward, like the estate tax. Um, and that's gonna have an impact, and no doubt, that is gonna have an impact. Oh, and kind of off topic a little bit, talking about revenue streams. I think I've talked a little bit before about House Bill five. Effort amongst some at the state government level to. Make more uniform the policies and procedures by which local governments operate their income tax. And one of the, one of the just killer aspects of that is that they want to institute a five-year loss carryover on every municipality. Uh, which would, according to Kim Geller's estimates, would cost the city of Heath about seven hundred thousand dollars in tax revenue. I got an email from Kent Scarrett, who's with the Ohio Municipal League. Who said that the authors of that bill are entertaining suggestions on how to modify the bill. And, and they're seeking these suggestions from local governments. The O M L is on top of this issue and is making sure that they are communicating with the state legislature. Those changes that would be of benefit and those changes that would be neutral in impact to local governments. And they're also communicating those changes, the, which are most of, of the changes. Those changes that would have a negative impact on local governments. My feedback to Kent from his email will be that the O M L should insist that the language regarding loss carryovers be removed from the bill entirely. Continue to let local governments make the decision of whether or not they want to allow loss carryover or not. Because that is really the one just poison. Financially poisons the, the water for us on, on that bill, so. Just kind of bring you up to, to date on that.
Anything else for finance? Okay, turn six thirty six.
Take a five minute break for seven, then we'll do caucus.
Oh, that is the one for.
The Great Recusal.
Yeah, yeah, that's right.
I want, when you, when you get to the end of this year. In February, we will roll the year and there will be a new number for general fund balance. That number is more than two million dollars in grand and if it's less, you know you didn't do so good. So this money will reset that balance from the two million dollars. I wanted to be so clear for me and you. That that's. So. You didn't, you didn't have approval of a balanced budget for twelve, you didn't approve a balanced budget for thirteen. You're gonna need to start reading about.
It's.
So you're trying to, the general fund starting balance will be low to lean because if you don't leave that money over every year. Then what's gonna happen is we're gonna have to leave it all over at some point in time.
And the mayor would really be disappointed if you would use the money that you can use for incentive.
Yeah, but at some point in time, we're gonna.
The, the other answer is to do what you have to do. To not spend.
At some point in time, we're gonna spend it on the path that we're, we're following.
But, you know, there's, we've talked about some collaborative efforts and there's some things in the works and that, that are all, that are all good. I figure you're gonna run out of, run out of this budget stabilization fund about the time I leave here. Maybe the next guy won't think in terms of that two million dollars, but I guess.
You got four years of that left and then we're going, right? I mean, you got four years left of that and then we're at, that thing's empty.
But that's if you have good years.
Right, and then that thing's empty and then that doesn't include, then after that, where does it come from?
Well.
That's what you're trying to get, that's what you're trying to get across, I think.
There, there's.
The city, like for instance, in Newark, which when you look at their expenses compared to our expenses, we're in a little better shape carryover wise than they are. Um, you, you, you talk to Mayor Hall. He has on his mind revenue stream, okay? How quickly can I get the bills that people, you know, need to pay, how quickly can I get them paid? And, and. How quickly can I get them paid and, and, and get that money in? Because they don't have the, the, the carryover strength that we do. Now, I would, I would take our position over their position, you know, in a heartbeat. Keith is not so much worried about our revenue, uh, uh, our cash flow, okay? Because we don't live day-to-day as much as Newark, uh, does. But, when you talk about what would come next, that's what will come next, is we would have to be more concerned about our cash flow because we would be living more day-to-day. You know, I, I, I think, um, as a side note to that, you know, Keith talked about that Moody's interview. Uh, just to let you know, I contacted Dan Evers, you know, the Economic Development Director for Grolick County. And I thought he provided us some very good data that we were able to share, uh, with Moody's prior to and during the call, uh, that talked about the growth of economic development inquiries in Lick County and also that the majority of those inquiries, they respond with properties that are in Heath. I wanna say, what, over the past twelve months, I think it was, he reported sixty-some different inquiries? And, um, of those, about two-thirds of the responses on those of eligible properties included buildings or site locations or whatever in Heath. So, yeah, it, it, it's, it speaks, it speaks well, um, for the position that we're in. The question is, is you don't just get to wave the wand and make it happen. There's a lot of different factors and so, um, hopefully we can land a fish with one of these lines that, that we cast them out.
Ready for caucus? Uh, Mr. Morrow, do the invocation. We'll need to excuse Mr. Henry, we have approval minutes, lax appointments, uh, special orders not. Then unfinished business, um, reconsider and amend eight thirteen. Mayor, the reason we have to do that is to add that, the two thousand for the vinyl graphics package.
Yes.
Was that missing out the first time?
Yes.
Is that number different to the thirty-one thousand eight seventy-two?
It's by two thousand, I think.
Okay.
Saw that somewhere.
I guess, I need someone to make a motion to reconsider.
That'd be coming out of safety.
Safety, you're gonna do, okay?
Yeah.
It's the same amount of money, the thirty-three eight seventy-two, but it's splitting the money.
Splitting the money, okay.
Remember what, Chief originally came to us with the number of thirty-one something.
Yeah, okay. So, you're just gonna amend it to the thirty-one? You can probably just read the way that is written there.
The whole thing?
Yeah. First, first you're gonna make a motion reconsider. Second motion, we'll, we'll roll call vote to reconsider, and if that passes, which you should, then, uh, you make a motion to amend eight thirteen by doing this, and then we'll vote on the amendment, and then we'll vote to approve as amended. So, there'll be like three things going on here, okay?
Motion to, uh, be, or to amend.
To amend. You're gonna reconsider, then you're gonna amend, and then you're gonna adopt as amended.
Yeah, a motion to reconsider, a motion to amend, state what the amendment is, and then a motion to vote on the ordinance as amended.
Get that, there's mine. I'll walk you through it.
I'll write in little notes.
All right, so that's that. Then, uh, no petitions, communications, and above those, there's committee reports, everyone's gonna, uh, Deb, you're gonna do for Community Development zoning. Uh, then introduction ordinance, the first one ordinance thirteen, the one we just talked about for budget stabilization. Is, you want that waived to, so it gets to, you don't care?
I don't care.
Okay, and then if you wanted, okay, so we'll let that go. Uh, then fourteen, purchase of the pickup truck, we need to waive that or?
No.
Okay, so we're just hold that for the next one?
Right, John.
Okay, number fifteen, authorize of sale. We might as well hold that one too. Never even get rid of that one. And then the, the drivers, or the, rather, the A C drivers, go ahead and hold that till the next. That'll be quick. And then, uh, the next, the seventeen, we're gonna waive that one for the water treatment plant improvements. And that's Mr. Morrow, you're gonna make that motion to waive it. And then on the eighteen, it'll be the same thing.
Yes. John, do you want me to throw those to you for the explanation as to why we're waiving them?
Sure.
Okay. And then, uh, ordinance on second reading, we have ordinance eleven, two thousand thirteen, agreement with Jayce Towing. Is there any update on that, Mayor, or anything different, or are we?
No. To be honest with you, uh, that was, um, that wasn't on my radar over the past two weeks. I didn't, I didn't follow up on that with Tim at all.
I mean, okay, I mean.
I'm, I'm fine with it, yeah.
They're okay with it, I mean. We, we, we talked about it was like a one, it was a month-to-month or something like that? A lease or anything, or is that lea- or we, we just, I guess agreement goes to you and then you sign the agreement. So, I guess it's the agreement you come up with.
Yeah, you're au- yeah, you're authorized.
We're authorizing you to come into an agreement with them. So, yeah, so, I mean, if everyone's okay with it, I mean, we, we won't know what the final agreement is, like, you, you know, actually sign it, so. It was supposed to be the two fifteen.
You know what the terms of it are, basically, so.
Ooh, somebody got pulled over.
We knew.
Okay, so that's gonna be. Yeah. All right, then we got no resolutions at all, and then comments. So, we gotta wait now? We got just about a half hour before the public hearing, so. Okay. You make the motion reconsider, ordinance eight, eight two thousand thirteen. That's what we did the first time. After we'll second, we'll do a roll call vote. Then I'll say, the motion reconsidered, been approved, and then you say, Mr. President, I'll say, Mr. Johnson, I wanna amend ordinance eight thirteen, you know. Well, you probably should, you probably should say, you probably should say, I wanna amend to, to state, uh, thirty-one in. Just read it, just be. We're gonna say, to amend to say, uh, an ordinance is.
Right, last time too.
And then, and then. And then make the motion to, to adopt as amended. Because we have to prove the fact that it's two thousand.
Temperature's gonna be in the fifties this weekend and sunny. If anybody else wants to pass out those information letters to people, write them up, and I'll start getting carpal tunnel.
Did you make that call to that person we were talking about in your office?
No, not yet. Oh, uh, we traded emails, he was supposed to call me and he didn't. So, and I, I didn't, I didn't get around to getting ahold of him today, so.
Oh, he's, he's told you to call him?
No, he said he was gonna call me, he didn't, so I was gonna call him.
Send him another, yeah, call him.
Yeah, yeah.
That's good.
You have that clear as mine now?
So, public hearing, now there's public hearings in regards to that right away that.
The right away between the two Libby brothers.
I hate when people show up that you know and rely on.
Now, we have the poke here, and then I'll ask, I'll ask for comments in, in favor of it, you know, speak, and then anyone against it to speak. And then we don't, we don't actually, we won't vote on it or anything tonight. It'll be next, next meeting is when.
Are you doing listening?
Oh, we're listening. You can ask questions or something like that, or anything, but, you know. And they can respond to something like that, whether they want anything, but, but we're not, we're not, don't get into debate back and forth and like, ask a question if you don't understand something or anything, that's fine, but it's more of them to let us know how they feel, do they want it or don't they want it? You know, why do they want it, why do they don't want it, you know, that kind of stuff? And do we think it's best for the city?
Isn't there a, did, so Nick, did you say there was a, sir, I'm sorry, I'm right through there?
Yeah, but it, it doesn't affect it one way or another.
You could care less.
Yeah, but we could care less. It's not gonna interfere or.
The police and fire.
And, yeah, the church, if they ever wanted to use it to get in for additional parking or whatever.
They're looking for some development, but they have no time. Saint Leonard's was, is, is interested in using that as an access point for future development. But I asked him for a timeline, and they couldn't give it.
But this is Glenn, how's, what type of this program?
He has one, he has both properties besides, he has one in the center, it's one, I think.
Okay.
Yeah. They wanna put it in a garden. I wanna grow, I wanna grow some tomatoes.
Glenn will take it and sell it back to the church where they want it.
Here's what you do, you go out, come out, then you split the lot, and you build, you build a little, little house right on there.
I like Glenn, I'm not trying, I'm not trying to be mean, I'm.
That space is big enough. If they, once they get that.
Put a double Y in there, baby.
Build another house there. And that's lots of that.
John won't allow it.
That's what they do in Newark.
Depends on my mood and I have.
You gotta get me at the right. Gotta bring lunch, right, John? That's right, that's right.
Realistically, they can do anything they want with the property now, other than just increase the property value.
Other than build them.
Yeah.
Right, because they probably maintain it.
Yeah.
And they can use it.
But we said, oh, it doesn't matter, they just can't put a garage out there.
It's been that way for almost sixteen years.
I mean, if they wanted to put a garden on it, so be it, let them do it.
Yeah.
So, what?
I've got a question.
I bet now we'll. Yeah, now we'll. The nice thing about having a fifteen-minute meeting of this, it's gotta be over. I love those kind of meetings, when you've got a predetermined end time.
No, we have to cut you off.
Yes.
Two personal sensible senators.
There you go.
South Carolina, and the other one's in.
Seven fifteen, yeah?
Martin?
Seven fifteen, ready?
Yeah, we got twenty minutes.
Hey, that, it's Joe, we went back out to Pittsburgh.
Yeah.
And, uh, they said, okay, we'll do another thirty days of this trial, so as long as your blood work comes back, okay? So, we were waiting out, there's a little cafe inside the place, we set the cafe, and he come out with his numbers. Paper reading, he goes, I gotta show you something here, and I says, that, that can't be good. He goes, no. Oh, it's good, he's kinda, oh, you know, they'll like to work you up. He said, look at your C eight one twenty-five, which is a tumor marker. It went from thirty-four hundred to twenty. And she was on those trial pills for sixteen days, and they had to stop in the middle.
Yeah.
So, that's a good sign.
Yeah, that's right, yeah.
That, that, you know, that pretty much says that something's working anyways, so, so.
But it keeps working, man.
There's a chance, yeah, there's a. She was pretty, she said, well, it's gonna make it easier for me to swallow this pill because they make her sick.
Although the pill makes her sick.
Yeah, there's not any chemo, but it's, it just makes her sick to her stomach. She said, it'll be easier to swallow, so. I figured, I never have any good news when I talk to you guys.
I'm glad you did, appreciate that.
So, I figured I'd tell you guys, there's, there's some good news. We go back in thirty days, and hopefully there's another improvement.
So, so she takes this pill, like thirty pills or something, then you, you're off for a while, and then you go back for another, or you just continue it?
Three in the morning, three at night, and, um, so as long as they're working and there's no side effects, they're indefinite. You don't have to stay on it.
You just keep, you just take them for.
You have to stay on it because it's.
Well, you said something about go back for another thirty days, that's why.
Well, they just, you have to be checked every.
Oh, you're talking about going back to, I thought you meant go back for.
More pills?
More pills or something.
Well, yeah, they give you another, here you go, take it home, and we'll see a few more days, but it's indefinite because if you don't take the pill, then, then it, it's not full, it was essentially full of what's going on in her body. Forget to tell you guys, if you guys ask, so I, I figured I would tell you since you asked.
Yeah, I'm glad you did, yeah.
Hopefully, something good comes out of that. Hopefully that, but, hopefully that keeps like that. It's, it's an overload, as you well know, you, you can only take so much. Why, you're not having any more good news that you, you haven't had any good news at all?
Friend of ours, who has a fourteen-year-old boy, and is now. Aggressive type, started.
Fourteen years old. I say, I, I got pretty upset, and I'm sure you did, when you find out that we're not that old, and when you look at somebody like that, my goodness, that's, couldn't imagine.
Yep.
Yeah.
His mother worked with Sue, and she worked with him. And the mother would be the grandmother.
Everybody else doing okay though? You doing all right, and Jay and the family? I haven't talked to Jay in quite a while.
I'm too ready for baseball season to start.
You are? Some warm weather, be nice? Nothing to do, is there? Well, time changes next weekend, I believe it's next weekend.
Yeah, next weekend, next spring here.
Yeah, Saturday night, whatever, Sunday morning. That'll be nice.
Because the preacher made a big deal about springing ahead so you didn't come, come when the church was letting loose. I said, they had no chance of that, he lasts, lasts so long, you could be an hour late and you still be there. I will tell you that too on Wednesday night.
Sneak outside real quick. Call, check all things.
At fifteen minutes?
Fifteen minutes.
Actually, yeah, seventeen minutes. I don't know if Lynn's back there in her office, or? I need to tell her about that, add that thing, wave it back a bit.
She was here when I got here.
Was she? Then she's right back in her office there?
And then she, I saw her, I don't know whether she went to get a drink or what, she went back again, check to see. There she is.
There she is.
Come both of them, yeah.
Yeah.
I need to take care of this.